We call the town of Auburn Springs to order. Rule call, Joe?
Robert Miller.
Here.
Jeff Bass.
Here.
Kenny Brown.
Here.
James Brunner.
Here.
I'm impressed that we have a core.
All right. Will everyone please stand and Mr. Joe Van Hook, will you please lead us in more prayer?
My father, we approached our town with grace with joy and awe, amazement. It's how great you are and how powerful you are, how loving you are, how you invite us to join you in your work here. We pray tonight as we deliberate that we would seek to join you and serve you, pray that we can serve the needs of our town and our people. We pray for the men and women that work here, that you give them wisdom that comes from Solomon through the Holy Spirit, that you would give them the patience and understanding to deal with the people, that they can offer a good service, quality service, that will be pleasing to you and serve the citizens and remonorate glory to you. We pray for our nation, our elected leaders, our appointed leaders. We pray for our servicemen when we're home in the road. We pray for the places of the world that's in a war, have huge disagreements. We pray that your Holy Spirit would descend upon them, that Christ would come again and offer peace to the world. We ask all this things in thy son's name. Amen.
Amen. Please, allegiance, tension, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval minutes from the February 16th meeting.
I'll make the motion.
A second. Any discussion?
Under my comments, second line, that should be November, yeah, what's that December?
Any further discussion? Motion.
Got a motion, a second.
Rule call.
Robert Miller.
Yes, sir.
Jeff Bass.
Yes.
Kenny Brown.
Yes.
James Brunner.
Yes.
Motion passes. At this time, do we have any delegation from the citizens? If so, please come forward and state your name.
I'm Robert Carnac from Sleepy Hollow, 400 Chickapin Lane in Sleepy Hollow subdivision. I've been there for 51 years, about a month. And this weekend's a sad time out there at Sleepy Hollow. I don't know where it came through you all or where, but it's, I've got this right here, and it's on the fence out there. And it says, and if this, if it can happen out there, it can happen around any of you all's blocks, your houses. It says right here, Cold Creek Rentals. Phone number. The hideaway, the hideaway. Overnight rental. WWW.ColdCreek.com. Now, well, the reason I'm down here tonight for is, I've been there all these years, I raised my family there, and I'm proud of Sleepy Hollow. But not this day, I'm not sleep, I'm proud of Sleepy Hollow, what's going on out there. Cold Creek is up in the mountains up there, and that's where they can stay for a lifetime because they pulled my daughter out there, took four hours to get them out there, and she stayed in the hospital over three weeks. So I know what Cold Creek will do for people. It breaks the families up, runs the insurances up, and everything else. But more than all, it's out there in my subdivision, our subdivision, which the people that lived out there have been proud of. And right now, I believe if Fox was leaving, it's right in front of Fox's house, and I want to know if it did, the council had anything to do with giving permission from them to be out there where you all can make money off of it.
But are you referring to short-term rentals?
Yeah, is this a Airbnb?
What?
Is this an air, like an Airbnb, like, they rent it by the day or week?
That's what's on the sign on the fence, right there. And when I was coming down here, I, when I was coming down here, coming out Sleepy Hollow in the midway there, you all know where it's at?
No.
Well, you didn't have nothing to do with it, did you?
It's an overnight rental, it looks like. We have an ordinance in place for overnight rentals, Airbnbs, that are converted houses to rentals.
Well.
This one is working outside of that. They are not registered, and they do not have a permit.
Well, what can I, what can I go about doing, getting rid of them? We don't need them out there. I had to wait, they was, they was leaving there, seeing, and they was out in the road in trailers from years back there.
Here's what I would encourage, in that situation, call Chief Laxton, call the police department, and, you know, and if there's something that needs to be resolved, we'll resolve it. But, you know, on the short-term rental side, when you own a home, you're allowed to rent that home out.
Well.
And it's not, I mean, Cold Creek doesn't own that house. Some private individual owns a house.
It's called.
And they're renting it out to folks.
Cold Creek signs right there on the fence.
I know, but, I mean, they're just, you can have a business called Cold Creek Rentals. That's not Cold Creek, the mountain, that's just.
Well, that's a business. You just got through saying business, didn't you? Is that not what you just said, business?
You can own a business, and businesses own houses.
Okay, if you rent, that sign is just like a Motec sign. Rental, call in on the computer, or call in on the phone, and rent me a room overnight right there, or whatever. If that ain't commercial, this is a residential place out there. It ain't no commercial place.
There is a mechanism with an ordinance that does allow for it, but they've got to be permitted. This 400 Chickapin, what's their address?
Well.
It's on Sleepy Hollow?
It's the first, well, he lives in Sleepy Hollow, he knows what.
Yeah, Robert.
Have you been out of Sleepy Hollow this weekend?
Yeah, I've come out there a while ago when it's coming out the road.
Well, what you talking about the plug, you know, you paid your taxes out there. And I've been paying it for 51 years out there, but I don't like it. Wait, I could miss my taxes, and miss the water bills, and nothing out there. And I raised my family out there, and I've lost two of the kids, and I lost my wife out there, but I'm still hanging on out there. But there's no excuse. If Cold Creek can rent out to these four-wheelers, they can rent out to prostitutes, they don't know who the hell's calling in, do they? Okay.
Excuse me, sir.
I'm sorry, apologize, I apologize. And I don't need to get upset because of my heart, but I don't have any years left, no way. But for the kids that goes to school out there and all that, that does not need to be out there in a residential area. Now, it can happen up next to you too, then.
There is a mechanism for them to get permitted to be an overnight rental. Now, they'll have to follow certain rules once they get that permit. And we'll make sure they follow those rules. I'll make contact with the owners of it now that I got the contact information, and I'll send them a certified letter. But there is a process. If they do get permitted and do it properly, they will be allowed to stay. Now, if they don't meet the criteria of the permitting process, they won't be able to. But under city ordinances, it'd be up to $50 a day fine.
Oh, wow.
So they may make more money on the rentals and having the fine, but we will do something about it. But there is a process that they can follow.
As the city, as the city making its money off of that thing.
I think we make like a $50 permit fee.
Permit fee, oh, a permit fee, well, you're making money off of it. You ain't got no business making money off of a place like that in a residential area that we've raised our families, and the kids has got to go right by, and the school buses got to go right by, and like I say.
Parking on the.
It's right, now, I'm telling you.
Now, parking on the street, they shouldn't be doing with the trailers. They need to have enough parking for each of their however many bedrooms they have.
If you've got a trailer on, you hit that door, and you've got a truck on it, and you've got four of those four-wheelers on it, and you're backing, backing that thing in, you blocking that, just a gate there, and you blocking it in, and we have to wait till they get out of the way, the school bus comes by there of a morning early, and they're doing that, he's got, there's no sense in letting them be in a residential area. I can see a commercial out there, plenty of commercial places.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would suggest that he contact a lawyer of his choice and look at the zoning and file a civil lawsuit, because he's asking the town to do it, and the town has limited ordinances and stuff that we've, you know, Airbnbs are permitted and so forth. If he feels like it violates restrictive covenants, then he can file his own lawsuit.
That's correct, you can, and you're entitled to that, and I would encourage you to do that.
Do what, sir?
Contact a lawyer and file a civil suit against the owners, if that's proper, so.
And if they're parking the street, let the police know.
Right, let the police know. I mean, Chief Laxton's standing right there, and he is a very proactive.
I know you've got a good police department out there, they come by, they do their job. I don't have no problem with you. After all, I don't come down here, now, you don't, you don't see me down here, but I got upset over that this weekend, because you go outside and all it wants to see all these four-wheelers out there in a residential area, and it ain't right.
Thank you.
And it can happen to anybody.
Anyone else at this time. So my update, I'm very thankful for our city workers, the work that they're putting in, water sewer guys, street guys, the ladies in the office, everybody, collective effort. We are pushing forward some really exciting things, very encouraged about what we're doing as a town, as overall whole, and so thankful for that, thankful for the police department, and I think we just, a couple nights ago, had the Anderson County Task Force really crack down on drugs, alcohol on the four-lane. That was a very successful night, so thankful for what they're doing, very proactive approach. I will say, last time, I had mentioned about a town cleanup date, and spoke with Officer Williams today about that. So possibly, possibly, we'll confirm by the next meeting on April the 22nd, which is Earth Day, in conjunction, hopefully with the high school, have high school students along with anyone else who wants to volunteer, we'll have a cleanup day for the creeks, the town, and hopefully maybe even plant some trees and some flowers. It's, I don't know that we've ever done it as a town. Does Cecil, do you know Jeff?
I don't think we have.
Yeah, so.
Redbud Festival years ago, they planted redbud trees.
Okay, so, you know, it's, so it's been years since we've done anything of that scope, and I'm excited about that. Again, we'll try to confirm within a week or so, but very excited about that, and just moving our town forward, beautifying it and cleaning our creeks out, and so that's that. I don't have much else at this time, just excited, again, as I try to always say, I'm excited to be the mayor, and I'm thankful for the opportunity to serve, so.
Thomas?
Thank you, Mayor. Give everybody an update. The Arrowhead Park rehabilitation brick project is underway, and what this project is, for anybody that doesn't know, is we're trying to match the brick of the new concession stand with the old concession stand. That building still has some life in it, and this is going to breathe new life into it, it's going to turn into a girls' softball locker room and storage. The youth club has put a lot of work in. Morgan County Correctional Complex has been and was originally assigned to the rigging project, but due to time constraints, a contractor has been assigned to complete the project. Rockland County Schools has offered to give us $5,000 to use at the park for these funds, and it fits perfectly with this project, and with a little luck, it'll come in just in time for the new season.
Sure. And I don't know if anybody's been down there, but it's slow, but surely taking, coming around, so it's going to look really good. Very excited about it. All right, Mr. Miller?
I'd like to thank the street workers for all the work that they've done, especially during all this weather, keeping the coverts and the ditches all cleaned out. It's a full-time job. I like to, Police Department, they came into the neighborhood last week and took care of some business that need to be taken care of, and I appreciate that, Chief, you and the guys doing that. And that's all I've got at this time, so.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, Mr. Bass.
About the same, you like to see, go and watch them, they've been doing, cleaning the ditches out on the four-lane.
Okay.
It looks real good out there, just give them a handle on all that. That's all I have for.
Thank you, Mr. Bass, Mr. Brown.
Oh, nice, like, I mentioned in the last meeting, what, out there, cigarette stores and festivals that drained, ain't nobody been doing anything with that as part of the clean out?
I can get a work order started, you just need the drain self-cleaned out?
Well, actually, it's stopped up.
They've been working all down the four-lane, they're working their way that way?
Yeah, well, you know, it's been, it's been a problem for quite a while out there. There's several businesses there, and I see people owns that, they extend that a little bit, that turn into there, because people don't understand, if you ain't careful, you'll be in a ditch. But it is stopped up. Hopefully, we can get it unstuck, or for the drain. And that's all I have right now.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, Mr. Brunner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have anything except, are we going to fill the vacancy tonight, or you want to do that?
We can, I know Ms. Teresa, we can definitely fill my old vacancy tonight. Yes, sir. And I have been in contact with one other gentleman for possibly Mr. Denton's seat, so, but I need to confirm with him if he wants to or doesn't. But yes, we can move forward with Ms. Teresa Van Hook. Yes, sir, would you like to do that?
I'd like to do that.
Okay. Joe, what's the parliamentary procedure here?
He'd make the motion, there'd be a second, and there'd be discussion and roll call vote.
Okay, so we have a motion for Teresa Van Hook to fill my old vacancy.
A second.
We have a second, we have any discussion?
She's not here yet.
No.
She was, the thought was that the mayor said we'd vote on it, I guess, the 16th, and Teresa and I would be out of town, because that's the week of spring break, and the mayor's mentioned he'll be out of town too with spring break with his family, and he may call that the meeting be canceled, and we just have the election tonight.
Yes, if we do that, then should we sworn in on what?
She can be sworn in anytime after it passes, but probably we'll swear in.
April?
April, yeah.
Okay, that'd be fine. So we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? Rule call, Joe?
Robert Miller.
Yes, sir.
Jeff Bass.
Yes.
Kenny Brown.
Yes.
James Brunner. Yes, passed.
Thank you, Mr. Brunner, and it's good seeing you.
It's good.
Always a pleasure. You too, Mr. Brown. Thanks, sir. Mark?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
We want to fill the other seats?
We will, just as soon as we get confirmation from the gentleman that I spoke with, that he does want to take the seat, then we will move forward, hopefully at the next meeting.
I have, I have a name, too.
Oh, do you? Okay. Would you like to?
Mr. Curry Holland?
Yeah, that's who I was talking to. Yes, yeah.
Yeah, Curry, he did a good job.
For sure. If you're confident in saying that he will accept, then I'm, I'm good to move forward.
So moved.
So moved. We have a motion, we have a second. Okay, Robert, second, any discussion? No discussion, rule call, Joe?
Mark Miller.
Yes, sir.
Jeff Bass.
Yes.
Kenny Brown.
Yes.
James Brunner. Yes, passed.
Thank you, Mr. Brunner.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Do we have a Chief Laxton update at this time? No. Okay. Mr. Bailey? No update at this time. Any old business? No old business? All right, let's get to new business. Discuss and possibly approve accepting the revenue loss allowance clause in the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, for enterprise fund, water and sewer. Thomas?
Thank you, Mayor. What this is, is for our ARPA direct allocation, which was $1,012,979, we're allowed to put money back that was lost due to COVID-19. During that time of COVID-19, we weren't allowed to cut off anyone's water, and as much as that was very nice of TDEC to insist and mandate that we do, it hurt a lot of people, because their bills got too big for them to ever get out from under. So some people had bills that thousands and thousands of dollars, and they couldn't even afford to pay their original bill. So they moved, and/or they somehow don't live there no more. And we had that revenue loss, and this will actually be an avenue to correct that revenue loss. And I have a resolution that was put together by our grant administrator, who is the one who is administering all of our American Rescue Plan Act funds, and it says, for the water enterprise fund.
This is the resolution that you're referring to, correct?
Yes, this is the resolution.
So I'll make a motion.
So we have a motion to accept the resolution, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second. Do we have any discussion at this time?
Before this is had again, I'm trying to find it.
Yeah, it's the resolution.
So this, so are you seeing people that can't pay their bill, or?
No, no, that was the cause of it. That's what caused us to get into financial hardship, and with our direct allocation of the $1,012,000 American Rescue Plan Act, you can use it for revenue loss allowances, and that's what I'm requesting tonight.
We don't know what the revenue losses are, I figured that's.
Well, I'm asking for, I'm asking for 312,000 of the $1 million to go into the water and sewer fund.
We got that money in the checkbook?
Yes, sir.
What we're doing, Kenny, is we're, the federal government gave us the million dollars based on the COVID relief money.
Yeah.
We're going to transfer $300,000 out of that, out of the general fund that we've gotten the checkbook, into the water department fund to cover all the people that didn't or couldn't pay their water bills during the COVID time, and couldn't terminate water and sewer services.
But my question is that, when they get this, you know, what can this money be spent for?
It's just.
Anything.
It's like, it's as if it never happened. It's like you're back to neutral again.
You know, if they could go and part of that buy in the backhoe?
It takes you out of the red, it's what it does, and puts you back in the white.
We're just trying to get out of the red right now, we're not trying to buy anything.
We're trying to get some breathing room.
Yeah, but.
Well, I understand, I'm all for that, but I just, I'm thinking that, how we could use this money once we get it?
I think.
As we want to use it, or we have to use it for.
No, once you get it, you can use it wherever you want, but I really would recommend you get it.
I agree with you, I'll sew them.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? Rule call, Joe?
Robert Miller.
Yes, sir.
Jeff Bass. Kenny Brown.
Yes.
James Brunner.
Yes.
Passed.
All right, motion passes. Item B, discuss and possibly approve removing Mr. Cox from all checking accounts and adding Jason Stiltner, and give the mayor or city manager or Ramona the authority to create new checking accounts to help manage and separate all grant funds to the city.
I'll make that motion.
I'll check it.
Got motion, a second, any further discussion?
Is this any different from what it was?
There's no difference. The only thing that's different is, is that I need the authority to be able to make checking accounts, and I need that in the minutes, that we have that authority.
Well, the banks too require corporations like the city, we're a nonprofit, municipal corporation, to pass a resolution designating which officers can sign on the checking accounts, whether it takes one or two or whatever. And traditionally, when you have a change of administration, say from Mayor Cox to Mayor Stiltner, you take Mayor Cox off because he no longer has the authority, and you put Mayor Stiltner on, and the bank has a form resolution that I, as recorder, will have to sign that will basically conform to this for the banking records, and then Mayor Stiltner will be added, and if they need to open a checking account for a certain grant money, this will authorize them to do that, and authorize me to sign the form banking resolution. I've done it many, many times, this is kind of standard operating.
What bank is this going to be, since the one next door is leaving, is it? Well, who's it going to be with then?
One bank.
One bank? We don't know who's going to be with next door, is it either, right?
We'd use.
I'm saying.
I think they have one of our rural development accounts for.
As far as the city's money is, most of it was moved.
Yeah.
So there's nobody else's name on there other than these three people, is it, right?
Well, we need the mayor to be able to be signed up to sign all checks, and then we need to give me, Ramona, and the mayor the ability to make checking accounts for the city, and the reason for that is, is that the way that these grants work is, is that the contractor sends in a bill, that bill goes to TDEC or Rural Development, then it gets processed, and they send us the money, and then we take that money and then give it to the contractor. So we're going to have about four or five projects all rolling at once, and to keep this money straight, we need them to list, this is for rural development, and then that goes to rural development, it comes into rural development, comes out of rural development, because otherwise, it's going to get, when we get audited, very, very tricky, very fast.
So these, all three can sign?
No, that's not for signing, that's to be able to go and create an account. So say, say I'm not here, the mayor can go create some account, say he's not here, Ramona can go create it.
All right, I'm fine.
So we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? Rule call, Joe?
Robert Miller.
Yes, sir.
Jeff Bass.
Yes.
Kenny Brown.
Yes.
James Brunner. Yes, passed.
Motion passes. Discuss and possibly approve spring cleanup dates. I know that the dates were tentatively April 3rd through 7th, April 10th through 14th. Ms. Wendy had made a recommendation maybe later in April due to.
Or it being posted on the water bill.
That's correct, that's right.
That's very important.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm okay with a little later.
The last two weeks of April.
I'm good with that. Thomas, or?
Easter, maybe?
I think Easter, fall, I think it's the third weekend, April.
No, it's April 9th. It's April 1st.
Early this year.
It's April 1st, it's April 7th is the Friday. Yeah.
So we want to maybe shoot for April 17th through the 21st, April 24th through the 28th, or 24th through the 28th?
There was an issue with our, we have to do a consumer confidence report every year, and we have to put that website on the water bills. I think there may have been a conflict with the next couple of water bills with that, I'm not sure, but, you know, we're required to put the website on there, so I'm not sure what day it works.
So to the 28th would be the last two weeks of April? And we usually give it what, a couple of days after that, just if they have access to get to the city.
Did we post that on the last water bill, the, what you just said, the consumer?
Oh, that one, that wasn't on there either. That, that's coming up.
What's this going to be, anyway?
Be the spring cleanup brush removal, and just all kind of.
Before you put your, numb all the stuff that you can haul off to the straight city.
Like, if you like to fall, clean up, know they're going to pay up.
Yes, they're just like.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, you mentioned that about cleaning out the creeks, that's not necessarily that.
No, that'll be completely separate.
Separate?
Yeah, yeah, that's. Yeah, volunteers, so.
Anything that you guys pick will be fine.
Do we need to set a limit on what we can pick up, like no paint? No.
Yeah, that's already, that's already said.
Have to bear in mind that sometimes what you can.
We'll pick up paint as long as it's been hardened, as long as they play their hardener and cords dry, as long as it won't bust.
Okay, well, you know, people don't wear hats.
I'm good with April 24th through the 28th, and let's roll over the first week of May, that way gives everybody plenty of time, we can, water bill, social media, word of mouth, which is. media, word of mouth, uh, wishes, um... Unless... Thomas?
Full set, sounds good.
Okay, twenty-fourth through twenty-eighth?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, first through the, yeah, first through the fourth, fifth, sorry.
Of May?
Yes.
No, I was hoping a couple of days to take it to the city, or seven, if they do. Are you going to get to help them after they say you're going to be there for it?
That's, that's the goal, uh, they do have a new city manager, a new mayor, so, uh, I think, uh, I think we should be okay on getting the...
With Rocky Top?
Yeah.
Don't you ask? Yes, uh, uh, they, they checked with them to confirm.
Okay, good. All right, so, any motion, a second, are we good with it, or...
Uh, you could make it by exactly proclamation.
Okay. So last week of April, first week of May, be the dates, so, any more business, Mr. Thomas?[1727.92]